I'd like to call the regular meeting of September 17, 2024, 6:00 PM to order via on City Council. Janice, can we have roll call please?
Councilmember Atlin.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ratten.
Here.
Here.
Onto item B, we have two items in closed session. First is conference with real property, property negotiators for Castle Oaks. I would like to move that to the end.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The second item, we are going to go into closed session briefly to discuss it basically because we have independent individuals here that are on our dime and our clock, so we want to get them in and out. We will take public comment on pledge of allegiance. Okay. Okay, is there any public comment on item number two, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation? Paragraph one of subdivision D of section five, four, nine, five, six point nine. Anyone on Zoom? No?
Nope.
Ready?
Yeah.
Live.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Ione City Council, September seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four back to order. As far as item, there's no number on it, B two, direction was given, nothing to report out. I'll do the pledge of allegiance. Can I get a, let's just wait. A approval of the agenda, please, I get an approval.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda, second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
There are no presentations, and we're going to open it up to public comment for any item that is not listed on the agenda.
I went to the sewer meeting the other day and other night, and I just, I didn't, I didn't see anything brought out about the, the work order. Regional Water Board issued a water, water code section thirteen, two, six, seven order, which requires them submit an individual water balance to determine above which required, let's see, determine in which facility has a capacity to handle the respective waste streams importantly, and if not, determine the capacity defective for each facility. I didn't hear a thing about that at the meeting. I heard about a regional one, not individual ones, and I believe this city and Suck Creek, you only one is going to be able to do that. CDF, Dainture ain't going to be able to do it, and Corrections has no way to do it with eight hundred fifty thousand gallons of water a day going in there. And I just think it needs to be addressed, and it was mentioned there's no VOCs, which there might not be VOCs in the last two years, but I got a two point two million dollar settlement from Mule Creek Prison dumped in Mule Creek, and it's not only VOCs. It's biochemical oxygenated demand, chemical oxygenated, totally solids, chlorophyll, orgasms, metals. All this stuff is still going in there, not counting their medicine, which you had a chemist here the other day, which is probably smarter than anybody in this room, and nobody paid attention to what he said about all this stuff about their hiding of these women, I mean, these guys can have this stuff so they can have a sex change. All this medicine they're taking is going right into this water, right onto the golf course, and not only that, you're directly dumping in a pond five from the prison, which goes to the spray field, and you guys are not doing nothing about it. Thank you.
Take your time.
Move it as living, Larry.
Thank you.
Lover Caputo, seven oh seven Shakeley Lane, City Council Mayor. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for the job you've done with the negotiations, including, by the way, this, this, the city manager. I don't want to short him. On the negotiation over the golf course, you kept this course open for us despite a great deal of unfair and unfounded criticism over your adherence to the Brown Act. I just want to extend my personal thanks, and for all those who feel the same way I do, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm sorry, tonight I only have six of these, could you, with each council, you share with, whomever you down want to be.
I came across this, apparently it was presented to the city September fourth, and in one of the, one of the things that's highlighted, city town field were brought online, which effectively eliminates the use of pond six and pond seven in the summer months. Oh joy, we're going to use them in the winter months when the natural groundwater is higher above the clay bowl, mobilizing the contaminated water to mushroom out at a, at a much lower level and has a much higher chance of contaminating wells. Okay, and then go on to the second one, ongoing to continue employ best management practice to maintain the aerobic conditions in the soil beneath ponds six and seven. Again, looking hard at not lining or shutting down the percolation ponds you were told, and this is the one I really liked. Current data does not support a finding that pond six and seven are causing ongoing impacts. Current data that isn't anywhere in this report at all, and consider this a public records request for any and all current data that they use to refer to this. And the second one, what's highlighted for you, this groundwater elevations are not strongly influenced by water levels in pond six and seven, pure unadulterated garbage. Please turn the page, two thousand and twelve seepage analysis, city of Ione wastewater treatment. This is the second Deverell study done with isotopes. Please turn the page now, you'll see page forty of that report highlighted. Isotope evidence indicates the presence of water characteristic of pond five in Scully Well Number One. Okay, that is the well that is currently at the Brick House at nine eight oh five, Dave Brew, Dave Brewback, owned by the McCarthy's, not mine, but that well that is much closer. Boron concentration similar to those in groundwater associated with pond five were detected in Scully Well, in, Scully Well One in two thousand and six. Pond five began operation in nineteen ninety-five, okay? Again, this isn't a time before you line ponds one through five, and they made that connection already twelve years ago. Please turn the page, page forty-one, middle of the page highlighted Sutter Creek water quality is affected by groundwater associated with percolation ponds five through seven during periods of low creek flow. Next bottom part of that paragraph, September two thousand and eleven, the isotope conversation of Sutter Creek is influenced by partially evaporated water characteristic of groundwater associated with pond five, six, and likely seven. You're in the creek. Bottom of the page, the available data and seepage calculations indicate that groundwater associated with ponds five, six, and seven flows to Sutter Creek and results in increasing concentrations of manganese, boron, chloride, and sodium in the Sutter Creek adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. Please turn the page to page forty-two. Sorry, I got to get involved now because at the top it says stable isotope data show the both wells on the Scully property are influenced by groundwater association with percolation ponds five, six, and seven. I'm almost a thousand feet further back from your plant. Okay, please go to the next page, it's a couple of pictures, and where they're, again, their position is the ponds do not affect the groundwater. This is the first of October two thousand and six, this is a, what's labeled a rainwater catch basin, okay? This is a, if you look and see the dark part of it, you can see this catch basin filling up with seepage water because that levee behind it, that's brand newly rebuilt and, and full pond seven, which is creating hydraulic pressure. If you go further.
Jim, your four minutes are up.
Okay, may I, okay, I have more, but anyway, you get the point. There's some problems with your, and I suggest you start looking more closely at it.
Hey, good evening, everybody, Tommy Quinn. When I was in town today, getting my mail, walking over to pay a bill here, I realized that the crosswalk going from the new coffee shop over the way, the lines are completely gone, there's no crosswalk there anymore. And it seems pretty unsafe. In general, all the crosswalks are pretty poor, I don't know if they're temporary or, you know, what it is, but that's a real safety hazard, I think, and once again, as I, I don't come to the meetings much anymore, I get too upset. I really love the town of Ione, it's such a wonderful town, but the neglect here, just the willful neglect in some parts. And I know some of you guys up there work really hard, but I wish things like crosswalks, simple thing like a crosswalk, so, you know, it's right out here in front of you guys, somebody should paint that, I mean, you know, call the city, repaint it. I mean, the whole road is a disaster, you walk across it and the tar sticks to your shoes. Yeah, that's what I have to say, I will say about what Mr. Jim said there, you know, someday, the ax is going to fall in this town when, like that place back in Michigan, when people realize how polluted that water is, and they're going to sue the crap out of this city, and we'll go hugely in debt. I wish you guys did a little better job on the water, thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. George, can you follow up with Caltrans on those crosswalks?
Actually, if you could have Caltrans come and, yeah, to the council, I, I have been in contact with, with them. They are working on the repairs necessary to bring the road to their standard, but I would like to know when that is going to happen, so if they can maybe come and do a presentation as to where they're at with that.
We do have one on Zoom, too.
Caltrans is on Zoom?
No, we have.
Crosswalks on Zoom.
No, we have a citizen on Zoom that wants to.
Okay, for a public comment?
Yep.
Okay.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so my name's Michelle Gallagher, I am the Amador County Code Enforcement Officer. I am just getting on for announcement to anybody and everybody that's in Amador County. Myself, Code Enforcement, Amador County, and Amador Resource Concertive District with CalFire. We are going to be putting on a free recycling community event on Friday, November first through the seventh, from nine AM to two PM at two locations, which will be at the Pioneer Park Lower Baseball Field and in River Pines at the RUP lot. It is a first come, first served, it is open to all Amador County residents until the bins are full. We will be accepting green waste and, and tree stumps that are no longer than two feet tall and two feet in diameter. We also will have at the Pioneer Park, a metal recycler that will take all metal car batteries and appliances, except items that have free on. I did want to, because I do know for Ione residents, it's quite a drive to go up to Pioneer, so I did want to see if you guys are interested. I know you can't say anything now, but I would like to know if you guys do have a secure spot in Ione and someone that is willing just to be there to check, to make sure between nine and two during those times, just to make sure that the correct greenery is being dropped off and nothing else, and again, that it can be secured. I'd be willing to offer a pickup service there to pick up the greens at the end of the week. So if that is something you guys are interested in, please let me know, because I would love to do a third location there, so it's not quite a drive for the residents of Amador in that area. So let me know if it is, and we can get that started.
Sounds great. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, all right.
Anyone else for public comment, item not on the agenda.
My name is Jim Hawkins, I live on St. Andrews Lane, adjacent, I believe, to the eleventh hole, R three. What you're looking at is weeds seven to eight foot tall that grow up from your golf course, right up to my property fence. Moved here four years ago, they were sprayed, never had an issue since then, nobody's taken care of them. I talked to Mr. Atlin before the last election at the restaurant, when they, they had the meeting before the people were, you're going to be elected, and said it would be taken care of, but it wasn't. What you see behind those weeds is a T on that eleventh hole, and the weeds go right up to it. I, I watch golfers tee off, and every once in a while they'll have a cigar or cigarette, and they throw it down, tee off, and ninety-nine percent of the time they pick it up, but the other one percent, they leave it. And that wind blows from that direction right into our property, and this goes all the way down St. Andrews Lane. And if that ever goes up, stucco or not, that stuff is going to go into our events, and you're going to lose a whole street. I understand there's litigation with the golf course, but it, it just doesn't give you the right to not take care of this. We have, but access in our fences, gates, so we could go down to your property and cut your weeds, which we shouldn't have to do. Some of its level, mine's at a forty-five degree angle, I'm eighty-three years old, and I don't know how many years I can do this. But it's just, somebody has to be responsible, I talked to Chief Lackey last year four or five times. The last conversation I had was verbatim, Jim, I'm, I'm tired of the politics, I'll come do it this weekend myself. I told him, fine, I'll have cold water, never showed up. I don't, I don't know why this isn't getting taken care of. You guys are going to lose a whole street of houses if a fire starts, because they're never going to get, they're never going to get there in time. And I'm just asking somebody to please do something about this, spray it, and one time, and it, and it's taken care of. That's all I got to say, you can have the pictures, I live with it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Spraying it isn't going to resolve anything. It's already been sprayed. Is that our property?
Yeah, it's so after I spoke with this gentleman, I did talk to Public Works. It's it's what's known as Lot A and there's a a fund for it. They collect taxes for it and it's the city's Lot A, the the city's responsible to take care of, so I could show you, George, if you like. I did show probably worse at the time. But that's that's a piece of property that has a maintenance tax on it that the people that live in Castle Oaks pay. So they shouldn't have to take care of it in addition to paying their taxes. But every year, and he's right. Everybody starts saying it's somebody else's responsibility and it's we've gone over this year after year. And I did offer to go around all these places on the golf course and explain which was the golf courses and which was the cities and nobody took me up on it, but I believe that that's part of Lot A, so cities.
We've cut all the weeds down to where you're looking at. And the reason that those that I'm standing at, that's my next door neighbor, and from there, all the way down to Castle Oaks Drive is like that. The reason is there's retaining walls behind their houses and they can't even access the course to do it.
Okay, we're going to try to resolve this right now.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
George, can you and then update us on Friday in your report?
Yeah, is and I'd like to look at whether or not this is part of our landscape contract as one of the properties that they are maintaining for the city.
Okay, I don't think so.
Is there any more public comment on Zoom? No. Okay, we'll close public comment. Item H is information items only. Have the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to regular agenda. First item is item number one. Stream bed alteration agreement amendment biologist requirement. I, this item came up with the Creek Committee. The Creek Committee discussed, is there a staff report with this? I think George is doing it.
Oh, okay.
Yes, like Senator Payne said, there's came up during the Creek Committee. With respect to the some background information, there is this final stream bed alteration agreement. And so this is a discussion regarding whether you need a biologist, you know, recommendation or in general discussion on the topic. So I'll right over to this.
Yeah, and we have Crystal here from the Creek Committee. Sorry to put you on the spot, but you know that agreement very well, it sounded like.
Yes, Crystal, I'm the vice chair of the Creek Committee and I'm joined with a few of the other representatives here. So the discussion was essentially on, we've got an existing stream bed alteration agreement with CDFW that goes through twenty twenty-six. It was amended last year to to expand the footprint. However, as one of the provisions or requirements to actually move forward to do work under the permit, you have to have a designated biologist on file that's been approved from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And that has to be done thirty days prior to doing any work and then actually receiving written approval from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. So the discussion was essentially, we were trying to figure out whether it was too late for us to do any sort of creek cleaning for this year. Technically, under the existing permit, you can do work through the end of October. And my understanding and talking to CDFW is that there's a potential to to expand that timeline through some approvals, but essentially, we're running against the clock, obviously. They're backing up thirty days from October thirty-first to get a biologist, so the motion that was taken as part of the Creek Committee was essentially to check with the city engineer about whether or not we had a designated biologist already sort of under a contract that's familiar that would qualify because it can't just be any biologist. They have to meet certain requirements as well and be familiar with the area. And then the second part of that was also, you know, if we're not able to, under the LSA, is there an option either through CalFire or whoever outside of the LSA, any authorities we might have from the public safety perspective in terms of maintenance on the levees if we're not able to actually do it under the LSA, so.
No, that's right. Actually, our city engineers here probably answered to we have a designated qualified biologist available.
Yeah, I'm Mitchell, City Engineer. We do have a biologist on staff. However, we, in these situations, we partner with local biologists that are familiar with the train, the regions and the type of wildlife and species that we have local to the city of I own. In this case, we do have a partner very neighboring inside Calveras County. And so we could look at some contracting mechanisms to make that happen.
Okay, and what what do the, what will the biologists actually have to do?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the reason it's required is absolutely. So with this type of agreement, essentially provides a blanket permit for a period of time so that we can perform cleaning of these creek areas or these sensitive areas. And we can do that ongoing as needed. It's a clearing brush typically non mechanized is permitted, i.e. no tractors, that type of thing. And what happens is sometimes we'll encounter something in the process of those debris removal. Maybe there's some question about a species or habitat that's changed over the years. If it's been revisited, for example, within the multi-year permit period, if we haven't been in that particular corridor for over a year or two years, the habitat can change. And the state recognizes that. They want us to have somebody on call that as we get ready to perform a project, if we see the conditions have changed or we have concerns, we can bring that biologist out very immediately. So it doesn't delay projects that can be, and most of the types of projects you'll see are flooding, for example, these types of things, so they're time sensitive. And if we had to go through the typical procurement process in order to bring a biologist on during a flood event or immediately following a flood event preparation for another, we wouldn't have that time to do that. So we'd have to do either emergency contracting, et cetera. And just to avoid all of that complication, the state requires that there's a biologist already identified.
Okay. So is the Creek Committee making a recommendation that we identify a biologist for purposes of this permit?
Yes. So so two things. One, I just want to sort of add on to what Jonathan said because the permit lays out some specifics about what the biologist has to do. One is that the biologist actually has to be on site whenever project work is happening, so it's not about them just being on call. They'd have to actually be there. They're also responsible for pre-surveys that have to happen fourteen days in advance of doing any work. So there's, there's quite a bit of work that that person's responsible for doing. The reason I hesitate on saying yes is because it kind of depends. We would like to, obviously, if we can designate a biologist and get that approval very quickly, great, but if we're having to contract with somebody new, presumably that's a bit of a longer process and I don't know how quickly we can get that done. So yes, if we can, if we can expedite that and have those approvals through DFW. And again, I I have relationships there, so I feel like I can probably get it expedited and have it happen, get the approvals quicker. But again, we would have to have somebody under a contract very quickly.
So can creeks identify biologists that would meet the criteria necessary? And present them to, I don't know, to us, to yourselves and make a recommendation?
To George, because George has authority.
Yeah, George could do it on his authority. We don't need to see it necessarily.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can, we can look into that. I mean, I think, as Jonathan said, if there's, maybe we can work with him to identify it. It sounds like we've got some people from maybe a neighboring county that could maybe work, so.
Okay.
Do that.
But we definitely have to have this in place before we can go in and do any more work in the creek.
That's, that's correct. If it's work that's identified as part of the lake and stream bed alteration agreement, the secondary part of the motion was if we can't and we're not able to get a biologist in time, are there other options? So that could include, again, public safety issues. So if there's overgrowth and if there's a fire concern, potentially, maybe there's something we can do on the on the fire side. But I, you know, obviously, I think if we can get a biologist and be doing work under the LSA, that's, that's obviously the ideal situation.
Well, at the very least, we could have them on deck for next year.
Yes, and I did check with DFW. We've, we've never had a designated biologist on file, at least that they're tracking. And so it would be good to get one. That way we've through the end of this permit, but also somebody we've got identified for our renewal in a couple of years.
So we just give a direction to George to coordinate with city engineer and his partner as soon as possible to.
Come up with a biologist.
Yeah. And it doesn't need to come back to us as long as it is under the threshold, correct? Yep.
It might have to come back for funding.
Yeah.
Well, it's under, if it's within George's funding.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, authority, then it's it's all you, George.
Yes, ma'am. I got it. Before we close that topic, I'd just like everyone to know that I've managed probably ten stream bed alterations permits. There's someone else on the committee that's done fifty of them. Best thing about doing a city one is Fish and Wildlife provides the biologist. Need to find someone that understands. Been doing this most of my life. Call Fish and Wildlife, ask them for their biologist. They will help you out.
That's good.
Okay, the next item, again, we're right back to the Creek Committee. And you you touched on this a little bit, was the creek cleaning and the resources and possible grant options, which are going to require an engineer and a biologist. Did you have anything on that? Yeah. I know that you guys talked about access points, possible grants.
Yeah, so I think some of the things that we've talked about are a little bit longer terms, longer term. One, in the event that we're not able to get a biologist and move forward with creek cleaning, we want to sort of look, explore other options, including, we talked about the urban streams restoration program. It's a program under the Department of Water Resources that offers grants for any creeks that run through urban areas and can be helpful for either creek revitalization or or pardoning or whatever, whatever we we need to do. So we're, we want to kind of look into that. We also talked about water pumps. So again, if we're not able to move forward with creek cleaning and we want to, you know, take preventative measures and make sure that Public Works and PD and whoever else is involved in response efforts have the the equipment or whatever they need for that. And so we've reached out to Department of Water Resources to figure out what what grant options are out there, just recognizing the fiscal constraints for the city. So those aren't anything for immediate action. We didn't take any motions on that. That's just something that we want to talk about at upcoming meetings to prepare us for great next year.
Yeah, and it and it was kind of my recommendation, we don't seem to have a lot of communication between our committees and council. And just kind of putting that out there and maybe going forward, we will get updates from each committee. Designed individual to bring us an update rather than having council just report out on it. It's it's much nicer, in my opinion, to hear directly from the committee themselves.
And also you can talk to Debbie Mackey with the grant piece. She's working diligently on grants for us, so she would be a very good resource.
And my understanding is Arlene has written quite a few grants herself.
Oh, she's not buying, no.
Okay. Take the public comment on that. Okay, I'm going to open that item number one and two on the creek up for public comment.
I was at that meeting and you had them make an amendment where they only had two years on the committee. I thought the council's supposed to vote on that. That is, that is up to the Creek Committee and I feel it ought to be four years. People don't know what's going, how the system works till they've been here a couple of years. Seems like the government tried to hide how the system works, so you don't know what you're doing.
I'm sorry, Larry, what was the beginning of you, two or four years?
Two years is what they've made amendment for. The way I got it, it's only two years, not four. Thank you. I might be wrong, but that's the way I read it.
Are you talking about the appointments of the people on the committee?
They made, they had an amendment there. And it said two years and they voted on.
Okay, I know, I'm. We didn't vote.
It's there.
The current ordinance says two-year term. That was.
Staggered, yeah. Okay. Anyone on Zoom, chief?
Nope.
Moving on to item three, authorize staff to proceed with an RFQ for Howard Park Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, thank you, Madame Mayor. Howard Park is a wonderful and significant asset to the city of I own. In two thousand and twenty-three, the Parks and Recreation Commission developed a master plan for Howard Park. However, not included in that master plan was a step-by-step plan in terms of how to and then all the different priorities in terms of and costs and so forth to implement and execute that plan. So this is basically will help us get someone to help us define all the needed steps and priorities and cost estimates of each step. So you have the report and bring it to your attention. So you can.
Okay, so I'm going to make a request. What we have in front of us right now is a request for qualifications. And I think what we actually need is a either a request for quotes or a request for information. If we get the request for qualifications, what we're going to get back is basically a list of contractors that say, I can do this work for you because these are my qualifications. And if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, if what we're looking for more is a overall person to bid it out for us, give us an idea of how much this costs are and additional information. So I would, I would say we probably want to change this from a qualifications to either a quote or information. So an RFQ or a request for qualifications, no, a request for quotations or a request for information. I think information probably gives us the most flexibility, but either one would would work.
Do we want to narrow down? Or?
I mean, if we're only looking.
Pretty broad.
Well, I think what we, that's why we wanted to give a broad view of everything that we're looking for so that when they bring us, when they reply back to us, they can say, yeah, for this piece, it's going to cost us. We anticipate this much time, this much money. We would need this much information, you know, and they can quote that out as a cost. And rather than just saying, yeah, I'm qualified to do, to make these decisions, I'm qualified to do this work. So I, I'm all for the getting the information back from contractors for this so that we can then use that information to apply for additional grants for the park. Because getting grants for the park requires that we have this kind of delineated information on what we're doing, how much, what the projects are, what they're going to cost, what the infrastructure is. And I, I think this is a good way to go about it. So we can just, you know, see how much actually this is going to cost the city to complete.
What I didn't see in here was a traffic study or any sort of environmental impact report.
Yeah, so the person hired, the RFQ would include all those.
But it's not included in any of this.
We can add it, yes.
Yeah, it needs to be added to this here. I can just say, over the weekend, on Saturday, we were out there by the pond. And the amount of cars I know Jonathan gave a report about the cars driving over the curb any which way, breaking down the curbs and so forth. They're also driving inside the park. There are now roads where there was a trail. The damage being done by thousands of people because you had the arena going, you had the little gym can of kids on their ponies with soccer cars going through the parking lot. It was dusty. You had something at E B Hall. There was something at the picnic ground and soccer was going on. So when soccer broke up, we were still there. Cars were driving around the pond. They thought it was a road. They did. These people did not know it was a road. Uh, one individual threw a cigarette out the window. Luckily, he threw it on the pond side and not the grass side, and we were there. But with that many people in the park and you get a fire going. So that part of the the track needs to have a barrier of some sort.
So the intent of this whole program is to define
We need a barrier now. Because it was it was nuts. And that that trail, it used to be a path. It's actually now a road that people are using to leave to to leave the soccer fields. So I don't know if Public Works can get out there and put something up at least where the water comes into that pond to where they're not driving on the side. Okay. Any other comments from council?
No, I agree with Diane. I think you need it needs to be a request for information. Uh, but obviously, if you're going to go after grants in the future of Howard Park, you've got to line these things up. It does take a little bit of time, unfortunately, uh, but it will get you the reward at the end. Uh, so let's take the next step and get a request for information as far as I'm concerned and get it set up.
Anyone else for clarification questions?
Good.
Madam Mayor, may I make a recommendation to the council in that the nomenclature that we're using here is interchangeable? But I think what you're, what I'm hearing the direction and correct me if I'm wrong, to staff and through George is to get some form of proposal, quote, information as to what it is you want. So I think defining the scope is going to help George a lot more than what we call the document.
Yeah, oh, I agree. And I I I would agree with the mayor that we do need a traffic study included as part of this. We've been asking for that for six years.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment.
Evening. My name is Dan Troxler. I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. We are not a committee. We are a commission. And I'd like to thank the mayor for bringing that subject up of the cars on the track. We have been working on that issue and putting forth that issue for years, and it has not been done. The I believe there was a study done a few years ago about the pollution that is generated by the dust on that track, specifically those truck, those trucks that are going in the middle of the park where we allow them to get in there. My recommendation has, and our our commission's recommendations, that the close that track down completely. That's why we're they're building, we're building a new parking lot. And so that people can get into that park without parking on top of the park. Um, and I I was wish that we can move forward quicker on that issue. And I agree with the mayor. We need to move extremely quick because it's getting worse and worse and worse. I go over there about two or three times a week. And I can actually drive around the whole thing and allude the the little fence that tries to keep you from going in the back. I can get around that very easily and so can anybody else. And that driveway that goes by the memorial, the brand new memorial is ridiculous. It's full of dirt. It's full of of dust. And people could be driving on that this week and on this weekend. So I would recommend that the council and move forward quickly and close that area down tomorrow. The second thing is, anytime a recommendation is made by the city council, it goes through the city council about parks. I would appreciate it if that recommendation go back to Parks and Rec first for our approval to put forward to you. Because I don't like to be pushed. I don't like our my commission to be walked around. I want everything to come to us about parks, then we will bring that to you. And that's that's the goal of my commission. And I would appreciate that happening.
Okay, well, how about we do this? Because it just happened this weekend when I observed all of this.
It's been happening for years.
You're right, it has. But seeing, yeah, I mean, you're right, the line of cars coming down that. Um, but George, can you
Madam Mayor, if you give me instructions.
Well, we can all give you instructions to put it on Parks and Rec. Their calendar.
In terms of closing the track down for parking.
Oh, well, that's a council decision. I just I just meant blocking at least that side of the track off.
But the the problem that we're going to have is an ADA issue. And and that's what we're going to have to, the council is going to have to go, we're going to have to figure that out. Parks and Rec and we'll bring it to you to figure that thing out. That but that's going to be a big issue because I already had people say, well, if you close it down, where do we park? We could park in the hundred park, new parking space.
Right.
But how does someone in a wheelchair or a walker get over to watch their little kids or their grandson or granddaughter play soccer?
So I I
And now I'm hearing what you're saying.
This is for This this should have started with you. This this request for information should have started at Parks and Rec to them together.
I agree.
Yeah.
Everything with parks needs to start with us first. And not go around directly to the city council.
Yeah.
And I would appreciate that happening. And that that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So do we want to
Close the track, please.
Send it back.
Yeah.
Well, how about we get the, we get the information and then give it to Parks and Rec to start off with.
Let me see.
I I I would like to see this started sooner rather than later so that we get this process started.
Well, they have a meeting coming up.
If if that, if this can be, but if putting, I if you want to put it on parks, that's I I that's fine. I personally would like to see this put out immediately so that we can get this ball rolling.
Well, let's put it out. And when it comes back, it starts at Parks and Rec.
That's fine.
Okay. Does everybody agree with that? How does that sound, George?
You have to vote on that or not? Got it.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yes, you should.
Uh, let's open that up to public comment, please.
You did, because that's how dang good.
Well, I haven't closed it yet. Okay.
Hello, Isa Finch. Um, Mr. Lee was talking about like a pecking order of how stuff's going to happen at Howard Park. And I personally haven't heard of like, oh, the softball fields are going to happen, and this is going to happen, and all this is going to happen. What hap- what you, the trees getting pulled out. I agree. I think that was a great thing that you guys did in front of the arena. The parking lot where you guys took the hill out. Personally, I don't see a lot of people saying like, oh, we need more parking over there. I don't see that. The warm-up arena that was built up, I get it. It gets wet down there. I understand that. But again, that was another thing that I personally and the people of the city, I don't see them saying, you know what we need to build up the warm-up arena? I don't see that. So I don't understand how that was, boom, pushed up to the tippy top of how things were happening at Howard Park. So if you could explain that to me or a different time explain that, that'd be great. And I'd love to hear that from you guys.
I I I think Andrea, I mean, this is off the topic here.
Could you guys not hear me? Sorry.
No, we can hear you, but
Not agendas.
We're not agenda. That's that item is an agenda.
Howard Park and what Mr. Lee had said originally and what he was asking you guys to put a line item up.
Our item is to decide whether or not to put out an RFP.
An RFP.
RFQ, RFI.
That that was the agenda item.
Yes, Mr. Lee, about how putting a line item of what was going to happen at Howard Park.
Yeah, so what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here is that Howard's Park, there is a master plan. But there is no priority or sequence of events in terms of what should happen first, the the costs and so forth. So I think what the council is trying to do is is reach that goal.
Okay.
Creating a prioritized and cost item of all the different things.
So this isn't part of the line item number three, or is that what we're talking about?
What is it, line item?
That's what that is.
Oh, okay.
That's a, it it's doing, that's exactly what you're asking for.
Okay.
We're getting it. We're trying to create that pecking order, as you called it.
Okay.
Um, along with some costs and timeframes and plans.
Okay.
Because there was a master plan developed.
Yeah.
But there was no cost. So associated with each segment of of the park. And there's no timelines and there's no priorities. So what should be built first? Fencing, parking, all those type of things. So this is what this would do is create a a a report and timeline of all the different priorities that should happen and then the costs associated.
Okay, so we never got quotes or anything for what happened to the hill and then the buildup arena before that was happened or done?
That is actually on the agenda as a presentation from
Oh, so it was done before the presentation was done?
That was a separate.
Oh, okay.
No, no.
Okay, perfect.
You have enough.
No.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys.
Okay. Um, so hey, you guys, we're gonna
I I appreciate the fact that you're you're doing all this work so that we can push it back to the Parks Rec Park Parks and Rec Commission. And a- along with that, when someone asks that type of question, have them attend the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. And that and that that would be the best way to do it. That way we could get more input from the citizens and then we could pass that input on to you.
Yeah, and and along the lines of the Creek Committee. And I and this has been brought up before. We'd also like somebody from Parks and Rec to come and give us an update. After their meeting. Yeah, it's better to have the communication rather than you know, us saying, hey, we did this at the committee. We should hear from the committees themselves.
That can be arranged. Send me a memo.
George.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, is there any more public comment on item number three, authorization to proceed with an RFI, CBL?
Her, A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
Anyone on?
No.
Okay. Um, moving on to item number four.
Well, don't we have to, we have to make a
It was just direction, wasn't it?
Yes, you already give me directions.
Okay. It's it says that you're out, uh, uh, asking authorizing staff to proceed with the RFQ for Howard Park. That's the direction.
All right, let's vote.
I'll make a motion that we make, uh, give city manager authority to create and distribute an RFI and request for information for Howard Park CIP.
To go to the Parks and Rec. Is that in there?
That would be the second step.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you good, George?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it? Okay.
Got it.
Item number four, reappar- reappoint, form on day. Reappoint Fern Day and appoint Victor Lesnick to Parks and Rec Commission.
Yes, some of the terms are up, Madam Mayor. And so this is the opportunity for the mayor to appoint uh, different people to various positions on the Parks and Rec Committee. So I think you have the applications and letters from each person. So I think the rest is yours.
It's all you, Madam Mayor.
Well, no, we, uh, we disseminated the applications, took input from Mr. Atlin. And the decision was to reappoint Fern Day, and I don't believe Fern is here, and I don't believe don't know Victor. Is Victor here? Victor's not here either. Okay. So we have a vote here.
You have a point.
Point, okay.
We affirm.
We, it, yeah, we'll get there. Okay, we will open this item up to public comment.
Council. I did not remember my reading glasses, so bear with me. Um, I want to start off by expressing my gratitude to the city council for allowing me the privilege to serve as your Parks and Rec Commissioner for the past two years. It's been an honor um, to contribute to our community in this role, and I'm proud of the progress we did together. During my time on the commission, we accomplished a lot of key milestones, including establishing our own rec department um, and the approval of the Howard Park Master Plan um, and advancement with the Train Depot Park with our city engineer. Um, and these projects will have a lasting impact on I own, and I'm proud to have been a small part in that journey. While I don't believe my work is done, I would have loved to see through the pickleball and basketball courts and the Train Depot Park opening, please know that I will be cheering from the sidelines while those improvements continue. Thank you to Stacy for appointing me two years ago and taking the chance on me. And thank you to Dominic for your partnership and dedication. I've truly enjoyed our last couple of months working together.
Same here.
As I reflect on my time on the commission, I want to take a quick moment for a learning opportunity. I learned that my term was up through, not through email or a phone call or any kind of formal acknowledgement, but only when I happen to look at tonight's agenda. And while I don't need any accolades of any kind, a simple acknowledgement of my services would have been appreciated. It's a matter of respect for the time and energy dedicated, time away from my family, my kids' events that I gave willingly because I cared about the role, I cared about our parks and our city. And I don't believe the situation reflects the values of our city. I don't think it's professional. And moving forward, I hope the mayor will consider a more thoughtful process of transitions like this. Volunteers give their time and effort to serve our community, and they deserve to be informed when their services are no longer needed. As for the new appointee, I wish him well. I'm excited to see what fresh perspective he may bring. And I hope the great work we've started continues with dedication and care. And in closing, I would like to reiterate my appreciation for the opportunity to serve. I remain committed to the well-being of our city and our parks. And I hope in the future, we can ensure that every volunteer feels valued and respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Demi.
Thank you, Demi.
I'd like to comment on this too. My name is Jody Mada. I own resident. Um, I have some sympathy for Demi on this. I spent many, many years on the Parks and Rec Commission. And I I think that this is was handled poorly. I'd like to know what the criteria is and who makes the decisions when it's time to reappoint. Is it a council? I I hope to know someday, frankly. But uh, is it a council decision? Is it the mayor's decision? Is who makes these decisions? And it seems to be a pattern here because this this pattern happened also with the Creek Committee that worked very hard for quite some time. And I know personally that they they feel very dissed by this whole thing, to the point where they they quit. And I want to thank you for your service. I know how much hard you worked on it because I did it for the first time about ten years, and then I went back for a couple more years. Maybe three, but um, anyway. I'd like I'd like that question answered. I'm just kind of curious. I don't know what the process and the and the procedure is, how the appointments are made. I know how they were made in the past. There was an opening, you apply. That's how it was in the past. Um, I'm not saying it needs to be that way now, but that's how it was in the past. And I'd like to know why, uh, how this procedure started. And honestly, I'm repeating myself, but any information I'd appreciate.
Larry, I'd like to know how come her letter wasn't put on the agenda. I'd like to know that. Who made that decision?
What letter?
Huh?
What letter?
The one she wrote that she wanted to wanted to be back on the commission. Thank you.
Uh, Dan Troxler, again, I'm maybe the recommendation I might make and ask is when, uh, I I was not notified of any change in my commissioners. Uh, next time I would appreciate it that I would be notified prior to reading it on a piece of paper that I was able to download on my computer yesterday. If if that could be possible in the in the future, that you would let the chairman of this commission know what action is being taken on a particular subject. That would be most appreciated. Thank you. of this commission know what action is being taken on a particular subject, that would be most appreciated. Thank you.
Gary Thomas, one twenty-five Maple Street. I went to quite a few Parks and Recreation Committee meetings over the years. I was even on there for a while myself before I got fired. Anyway, um, Debbie was a good contributor and, and I think she deserves some praise for her contributions to the city of ION. So that's what my purpose is here. I know that in years gone by, this, the mayor used to appoint, and then the rest of the council used to approve. I don't know what the process is now, but I'd like to understand that to make sure that's, if that's still the way it is or, or whatever, but Demi Wright was a good, uh, council member for, uh, committee member for you. So, thank you, Demi. Damn right.
Victor was online, did have his hand raised.
I did, um, and I, Victor Lesnick here, I appreciate you guys giving me a couple of minutes. Uh, certainly going to be a little tricky following the letter Demi had, had read and, um, certainly not the time. Right, I had thought about kind of talking immediately. I do want to share that my focus and priority and, and willingness is certainly here towards Howard Park, living nearby, uh, in the wildflower community. Uh, we use the park on a daily basis with our child. We've played soccer there, played myself soccer there recreationally as well, and spend some time with my dog almost every day at the park. So the well-being of the park is important, not just for me, but my family, our neighbors, and I think the residents of ION. So all I can say is that I'll promise to, right, uh, I know I have big shoes to fill, but focus on my contributions to the Park and Rec Committee and, uh, appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
I will make a motion to approve, uh, the two appointments to Park and Rec.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, we did. They did know. I'm not going to argue. Everything comes through the city clerk.
I was notified.
Right.
I notified you.
Right. And I distributed.
Two letters.
Three letters.
I only have two.
Well, there were three. Okay. Well, I'm a little.
But this is done.
We, we've voted, it's voted. Um, obviously, people are upset.
We're done.
We are done. Okay, we are going to reports and communications from city attorney.
I have none.
Reports and communications from city manager.
I have none, but I do have, uh, uh, would like to invite Jonathan Mitchell to come up to give a, a brief, uh, report on some of the activities going on. Can I do that?
Andrea's update.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lee. Um, uh, this item is a follow-up from our previous city council meeting regarding the uh, traffic control devices placed or proposed to be placed and approved for Foothill Boulevard. So at that time, we committed to completing a, uh, speed survey for the segment of Foothill Boulevard between State Route one oh four and, uh, Brickyard Road. Um, and we have completed that, uh, since then. Uh, I've reviewed it. I was out in the field with our team members. Uh, it was the same traffic engineer we used to evaluate the conditions for, uh, signage and striping. So at this time, what we have come up with and is that we would propose not to post a speed zone at this time. And there is a reason for this, and, uh, in working with the developer that, um, volunteered to provide the signage and striping cost at the previous meeting, and his schedule is to have the signage and striping completed in the next two weeks, uh, which we believe will impact the speed zone, uh, study. In other words, that we believe that it's going to have an impact on the speed of the traveling public. And the development of speed zones is through the observations of an eighty-fifth percentile speed, as well as considering many other factors associated with the road segment. Um, and so we don't want to send a message of inconsistency to the public, especially those living close by, and put a speed zone up right now that we believe will be changed based on the geometrics that we have incorporated in the initial phase and future phases of the improvements on foothill, especially when we have the signage and striping coming up in the next two weeks. So right now, uh, and let me get into the details of the study a little bit. We've talked it over, um, the, we have a, so we have a radar trailer out presently. We've done the study around the radar trailer, um, both at the Brickyard segment as well as the foothill segment near the state route. Uh, we've done it in both directions of traffic. Um, and we've also completed the radar, um, analysis along each segment that has different uh, geom, geometrics, i.e. the first segment between, um, the state route and the park and the first horizontal curve, and then after that first horizontal curve, all the way to Brickyard where the park adjacent segment. And we've observed that the radar trailer has brought a reduction of approximately six miles per hour, having it out there, um, which is very effective. At eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentile speed as an example, um, if it was based on eighty-fifth percentile for the sixth first segment, which state law does require speed zones to be established in consideration of the eighty-fifth percentile, uh, it would be posted at, uh, thirty miles per hour or thirty-five miles per hour on the initial segment from State Route four, um, into the, uh, up to the park segment. Now, because of the reduction that we saw with the radar trailer, we believe it's that type of adjustment that we will continue to observe when we make changes to signage and striping. If that brings down the eighty-fifth percentile speed, that gives us the ability by state law to post a lower speed zone if, in fact, the eighty-fifth percentile does reduce, as we've seen with the radar trailer. Uh, so rather than posting a speed limit right now that's consistent with the guidelines that we have to produce, we recommend that we first make the changes in the next two weeks, then we complete the study again, and we can see what the outcome is, uh, before posting signs. That's the recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that would pertain to that. There's, uh, there's a tremendous amount of detail that have gone into this, and so I think we're equipped to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, what, yeah, this should have been on the agenda.
Should have been on the agenda.
Uh, so the reason it's not on the agenda is it's, uh, speed zones are not, uh, on the agenda. This would be something that would be completed and produced. Uh, we did commit to an update. We completed the study, and we would not have ti, we would not have had time to come and do an agenda item um, after the completion of the study and still be on for this council meeting. It was intended just to be an update and show progress. Um, and we had no way of knowing what the outcome of that study would be, uh, if it was, you know, if we were going to recommend posting or not posting, and that would not be on the agenda to take action. It would be between engineering and, and law enforcement.
Okay, so at our last meeting, you said that you would be, you should be able to have, uh, concrete some, in enough information to make a recommendation in about two weeks. So we're now two weeks. And your recommendation is to wait to put signage up until?
Until after we, so, no, to, to wait to not post the speed zone until after we've made the completed signage and striping uh, that was previously approved and is scheduled for, for construction in two weeks.
Okay, so can you explain to me the difference between a speed zone and what the signage that's going to go up is?
Yes, the approved signage was no parking zones, um, a ladder crosswalk. Those were the items.
Oh, so that's what we approved, and you, you're def, you're, you're talking about a speed zone. What, what do you, can you please define that for me?
Yeah, speed zone would be posting speeds on, speed limit signs, established and defensible, i.e.
Those are not part of the signage that's going to be going up as part of the developers' requirements?
That's correct.
Okay.
It wasn't included in the previous council item. It wasn't a part of the previous study. Uh, it was something that we did recommend that we perform a speed study. As part of the initial analysis, we said, okay, there's several recommendations, one of which was the placement of the radar trailer, uh, to get, you know, to start to get some immediate action. The second or one of the other items was to complete an initial speed zone study. And there's many reasons to do a speed zone study before you make signage and striping changes. If you don't perform a study before you make signage and striping changes, i.e. the crosswalk and the striping improvements, we can't measure what the change was on the behavior of the driver.
You have baseline data now. So you, you're going to take your baseline data compared with the, when, once the, the signage and the striping is done, and then you'll come back and make another recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect.
If we were to post based on this study, it would be, in my opinion, potentially posting artificially or speed zones that were, the speed zones would not be enforceable. And if we posted enforceable speed zones based on this speed study, um, it might be interpreted as, uh, artificially high-speed zones, um, but it is based on data. And so it doesn't make sense to post speed zones that would be higher than what we may see in three weeks. And that just sends a message of inconsistency to the public, even though it would be creating consistent enforceable speed zones. We think that the driving characteristics may change after the striping is complete.
Okay.
So I'd, I'd like to add something real quick. Um, I've been working with Jonathan on this, and one of the big reasons we, you know, we're, this recommendation's being made is we have to have the speed survey after, after it's done to enforce it. Okay, and, uh, based off the results we got, we think those results may change once the crosswalk goes in and the, and the signage goes up. Um, and that also gives, gives us more time to get a very accurate survey with a little more time in there.
We've also considered additional signing that might be more of temporary in nature that would complement the speed trailer. Uh, but with construction in two to three weeks, it doesn't make sense to post long-term signage for a short-term measure. It adds additional public costs unnecessary. But it is recommended that we maintain the, the type of thing. The chief and I have discussed the maintenance of the trailer or strategically moving the trailer and collecting data from that and, and continuing to work together on this as we develop it. But that's the reason this didn't come to council. There's no decision point to be made by council. Um, it was intended just to say, hey, we are continuing to work on this, and we intend to return. Uh, but this is more, uh, as described in the previous council item, it's an ongoing item.
Okay, and that, and how long, how much more data are you looking to develop and for how long?
Uh, it's, it's basic, so in the sense, as soon as this initial phase is complete, as we described, this was a, a trial phase. Initial signage and striping comes in, then we complete another speed zone, uh, study.
So striping is going to go in in two weeks, and so you need at least another two weeks, three weeks after that?
Yeah, I think normally we don't want to go back and study something until everybody's had time to adjust their driving habits to a new surrounding. So I think two weeks repeating a speed zone is too quick. Um, normally we want to repeat that kind of study in a couple months. Um, so that you, you have everybody kind of say, okay, there's a change, and start conditioning themselves to the change. So in other words, after it's striped, the next day or even the next week, if it is going to have an impact on driving speeds, it will not show necessarily in that period.
Okay.
So what, what we're hoping is to, to reduce the speed in the zone, we need geometrics and signage and striping changes fundamentally. What's happening right now is when you're heading southbound from the state route and you're cruising down Foothill Boulevard, the speed is approximately eighty-fifth percentile, thirty miles per hour, which is likely an appropriate speed zone for that first segment. It's coming off a state route. You would never post a twenty-five mile per zone off of a state highway, and that's because of vehicle functional class and state law. Now, transitioning into a park zone is what happens right after that first segment, when you come off the state highway. You travel that first segment south on foothill, and then you have your first horizontal curve, and then you immediately go into a park zone. And this is not just at any, any park. This is a regional park, not a local park. So we don't see the type of traffic you'd normally see on a local park, where you have people coming over, kind of throw the frisbee, walk the dogs, that type of thing. You have a much more concentrated pedestrian vehicle traffic that occurs on a shorter segment of road, because you're not just offering and, offering some small programming in that park. You're accessing that park on that segment for many, many different, uh, types of activities. And so when you have all of those activities, you increase the demand on a short segment of road, that's the type of thing that we're seeing on this isolated segment of foothill. It changes, um, quite a bit, the level of risk for pedestrians in that area. And so in my opinion, the type of change that you're seeing when you come across that corner right now, when you cut, people slow for the corner, and they get back on the accelerator as they've come out of that corner, and they're accelerating again as they come through that park zone. And so what we want to see is that they come around that corner, they slowed for the corner, and then we want to have controls in place that they immediately see while they're still slowed for the corner. Before they accelerate out of the corner, we want those drivers to see other controls that will cause them to not get back on the accelerator as quickly as they currently are. And, uh, striping, as we originally proposed, is a low-cost way to do that. We did the ladder type of striping for the crosswalk because it's much more visible. The density of paint on the pavement is much higher than just two, um, parallel stripes. The ladders are much thicker lines. They poof all the way across the pavement. It's more visible to drivers even at night. Um, so that is one reason, but ultimately, as we talked about at the previous council item, we'd like to see some other things like rapid flashing beacons, maybe some extruded curve areas to help channelize the flow of drivers. Once we start to see these types of improvements made, the probability of a driver getting back on the accelerator after that first horizontal curve uh, is much less. And, uh, and so rather than trying to, it's a kind of a, a situation where you, posting a sign does not change driver behavior, except for statistically usually one in, one in usually thirteen or fourteen. And that actually creates more dangerous situations where you'll have the natural flow of traffic that is higher than the posted speed limit. First, you have an unenforceable speed zone then, as chief explained. Second, what happens is other dangerous conditions where this one in thirteen or fourteen statistically will follow a posted speed zone, no matter what they feel is comfortable. And so you'll have somebody that drives slower because it's posted. And then you'll have the remaining higher percentage that decides we're going to continue to drive much, much faster than this. And they'll ride the tail of the person that's abiding by the posted speed zone. It doesn't mean that speed zone's, uh, actually enforceable. It just means that it was posted in order to help slow people down. Instead, it accomplishes by creating an unsafe environment in many cases. So instead of trying to change driver's behavior based on the request or the sign, if you will, saying please slow down, what we try and do is change driver's behavior by changing the conditions of the road that they observe. We add in additional items. So we channelize the driver, cause them to naturally slow down. We put in additional signage and striping to cause them to see that there may be a pedestrian crossing ahead. I better not continue to accelerate. So that's the typical way that these, these things are done. Um, anyway, I know that there's, that was a lot of information, but it's, it was a detailed study.
Yeah. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Uh, council comments, committee reports, we got some future agenda items.
Good to meet you. I got two things. Number one, like to know where we're at with the sewer rate study. Been a year. I don't know why it takes so long, but like to get that as soon as possible. Second thing is, um, used to be when you served on a commission, you got a plaque or you got a little certificate, and that has definitely not happened in the last couple of years. Um, we had Angie Avila, served twelve years on the Parks Commission, didn't get any kind of recognition whatsoever. I think everybody that serves a term should get recognition. So I don't know who's in charge of the recognition, but, um, like to see that stepped up, and then let's go back and thank everybody for the service they did. Um, and I think it would also be helpful if, um, the terms are put either on the, the top of the agenda, so everybody can see it every month that they're twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six or whatever it might be, so that it's not like, uh, oh, I didn't know my term was up. Uh, and then just have a policy where, whatever, three months out, they start getting letters saying, do you want to serve instead of like the night before or the week before or, or whenever it happens to be? So just like to tie, tie, add those to some kind of policy if I could. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to get a wastewater committee meeting on the books for October.
You got the, um, invite from, uh, Catherine?
Yeah. Um, I would also like to put a finance committee, uh, meeting on the books for late October, assuming that we get somebody in. Uh, that's not necessarily pressing, but it is because we need to know where we're at with our audits.
We should have a meeting no matter what, to talk about the audits.
Yeah, if, if we can do that in.
Even if we have to bring somebody in to finish just the audits.
Jane has been coming in a couple hours every day, which has helped significantly. So Jane was the one helping with the audits. So she'd be going every day. So that other, uh, gentleman that we talked, that you referred to, he wanted.
A lot of money.
Much, so. Well, one, one day we should.
What, where are we at on the audit? Which, are we still on twenty twenty-one?
And nineteen twenty was the last one completed. We're working on twenty twenty-one.
So I should have.
So I should have a report to you next, uh, next meeting.
For twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
I got nothing. I got two things. Um, we had a meeting back in December of nineteen, twenty twenty-three, and it was, uh, at the time, it was a huge issue of trying to figure out. It was item J on the regular agenda was update of wildfire subdivision with Jonathan Mitchell. Made about the following comments regarding wildfire, and it's basically the issues with the street and the concrete settlement. And back then it said we were going to get an update within a month or two and we still have not got anything. So I was wondering if maybe the next meeting we can get an update of what's going on with that.
I think it was more the developer instead of the city engineer. They were gonna, uh, there were two or three phases and then we got a lot of rain at the beginning of the year and so they kicked it out.
Well, there was a fight between the contractor and the developer and the city was looking at pulling their bonds because we weren't going to wait around for them to do anything. And that was the last report we had.
No, we, we had another report, uh, when George came on, that the developer had indeed submitted their plans.
Yeah, good as soon update on that, because that's my last recollection.
Because they had gotten together over the streets and they were going to do two studies. They did one in January and then they were going to follow up when the rain season stopped and do another, so they would have an adequate study. So maybe ask him where those studies were at.
I followed with Jonathan and Tom.
And then the, um, one last thing is, um, now that I heard all this, I want a, an explanation or an investigation of what happened to Demi's letter. Because I never knew she wanted to apply again.
It came to me. I distributed it to one, to one council member. Because if we do it with three, we have a serial.
That's why it goes to city clerk.
Pardon me?
You send it to the city clerk.
It went to the city clerk.
I did get Demi's, uh, reappointment letter and.
When was it received?
I also got one from Fern and I forwarded both to the mayor.
Yes.
And then on Friday.
Okay, when was the letter received?
From Demi?
Yes.
I'll have to go back and check my email.
Because we had, uh, we had opened it for, in, for volunteers and several times. And were all of the sitting commissioners that were up for, uh, reappointment notified?
Right, yes.
Well, Demi said the first notice she received was the notice of this meeting today.
Right, that she wasn't reappointed. That's what she was notified, when she read it on the agenda.
I see, okay. So yeah, I'd be interested to see when her letter was received versus when we closed out the.
I'll hold that for you.
Thank you.
And then the first, I didn't receive the third letter. It went directly to the mayor. So that's when I was, I caught on Friday.
It was addressed to the city of Ione.
Well, I, I, I mean, the, the mayor is the one who gets to appoint regardless of of whatever. Um, so it is always going to be the mayor's decision.
That's all I have.
Now we will resume to closed session on item. He said he didn't have anything. Closed session conference with real property negotiators, uh, we'll open that up to public comment before we go in.
Look like a.
Nope, okay. Our journey closer. The Ione, city of Ione, uh, September meeting back to order, sorry, up in front of me. Um, no action was taken. There is no information to report out. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Oh, I bet it does. Yeah, that's. My front windshield, my husband played it for me because I have the same. Parked under a sap.